Good evening and welcome to the October 23, 2018 meeting of the Gilderlin Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the showcase of student work and I will pass it to Dr. Wiles for the introduction.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to invite our high school principal, Mr. Mike Biscatelli, and our assistant principal, Anne Marie Springsteen, to the podium to come up and tell us about your very special trip to Albany Med and our very special guests who are with us tonight.
Do you want to talk to them?
Sure.
You guys have to come up too. Wow, good evening, everybody. Last spring, and I want to thank Christine for this, last spring Christine arranged a meeting with Albany Medical Center with a team of Gilin High School teachers and administrators and we were talking about exploring opportunities for students at Albany Med. And during that conversation, it came up about that every year they do the presentation of the Albany Medical Center Prize in Medicine and Biomedical Research and they said they invite some schools, some students from schools to the event and they said, "Well, why don't you come to them?" So we were like, "Yeah, that would be great." And then in the fall, we got the notice that the event was happening and we were like, "Okay, we gotta get some students." So we went to our counselors and we said, "Okay, we need students." Two criteria that were really important. One, that they have an interest in the medical field, and two, that they were confident enough to stand up and ask questions to three scientists that are researchers and we want them to be able to stand up in public and be able to do some public speaking. And we invited four students with us, two of them are with us tonight. The four students, we had Tasneem Naina, Sinal Swain, two of our students can make it tonight, it's Ruben Chen and Sidra Hassan. So right now, I just want to pass the mic over to these guys so they can share their experiences at the presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tasneem Naina and I'm a senior here at Gilderlin High School. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Albany Medical Center Prize in Medicine and Biomedical Research and I was inspired to hear pointed, like the scientists answer pointed questions about their research and their journey to get there. Dr. Carl June, Dr. James P. Allison, and Dr. Stephen A. Rosenberg were the three winners of this prize. They conducted trailblazing research which cured people of their illnesses such as HIV, metastatic melanoma, which is a skin cancer, lung cancer, and also leukemia. As an aspiring dermatologist myself, I was truly inspired and I hope one day I could make a great difference in the medical field. Thank you.
Hello. As Tasneem was saying, I'm also a senior at Gilin High School. Something a little different is that over the summer, I actually took part in research at Albany Medical in their immunology and microbiology department and my research was based on HIV and certain viruses. So funny thing, when Mr. Biscatelli first brought up the prizes, when I looked into the researchers, I realized that these were a lot of the researchers whose works I'd been reading over the summer. So it was truly incredible to be in the same five feet from the same people that I admired for all summer and for honestly, a lot of my life. And it really was very eye-opening and it was just something that like most people don't even get to experience, much less a 16-year-old. And that's something that wouldn't be possible without Ms. Hayes and Mr. Biscatelli. So definitely want to say a big thank you for making this opportunity come true. Thank you.
There's one more note I wanted to call attention to that was pretty special. So as Tasneem was saying, we saw these three researchers, they were all about, basically about trying to find natural ways to battle cancer. And then a week after we were at the presentation, we found out that Dr. James Allison won the Nobel Peace Prize for Science. So it was, I mean, I came up to these guys in the hallway, I go, "Do you realize you met a Nobel Prize winner?" Like, "Yeah, whatever." Nah, that's not what they said. But it was, it really was an amazing experience for everybody and we want to thank you, Christine, for helping us be there, so.
Can we come next year?
Thank you for coming. It was exciting for me to have representation from the school there as well, along with some of the other local schools that were there. I think that's always a great event and so hopefully we can continue this tradition in the future because we'd love to continue to have students from Gilderlin there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, what other schools were there?
There were students from Shenandoah, Albany Academy, Dome Stewart, and Albany High School.
I saw some of the kids in that picture had uniforms on, I was just curious.
Yeah, they took a big picture of all of the students with all of the scientists and some leadership at Albany Med and then kind of individual school pictures, which I think everybody saw that picture. I don't know if we posted it to social media, but maybe we can. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the public opportunity for input on the 2019-20 budget development. Is there anybody here today that has come specifically to weigh in and provide input for the 2019-2020 budget development? I know we have people signed up for public comment, but is anybody here to speak specifically to budgeting for next year? And of course, we provide this opportunity this evening, but we're always hoping for ideas and people to come forward at any meeting, so this is just the first of many. Sure, come on up. That's okay, you can just come to the microphone and identify yourself and share your thoughts. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Charles and I know Judy from the Lynnwood PTA. I see my principal over there. But I have ideas for the budget next year with regards to diversity in our schools. Just from personal experience alone, I feel like there's a benefit for there to be some type of training or something for like staff, people who drive buses and things like that. We're a new family here, this is actually, we're going into maybe our second year and there've been some things that happened to my kids that I would rather have not happen to my kids in Gilderlin schools. And talking to other minority parents like myself, who are African-American most specifically, it just seems like this is an area that there needs to be work done in as far as how to relate to children who are African-American or black or brown children, particularly in the climate of our society right now. And I just feel like there should be some money set aside for some type of training or something because you have kids that have issues that they want to talk about, that they need to deal with, there are things happening and there's no, nobody seemingly to understand where the kids are coming from when they have these issues when it deals specifically with race. And so for me personally, I would like to see there be more training in that. The bus drivers need to be trained. I know you have DASSA, but I don't really know how effective that is. Because I feel like if DASSA really worked, then a lot of the things that have happened to my children would not have happened to my children. And these are not things that have just happened, you know, from interactions with other kids, but also with adults. So I really feel like that's an area of need. And I know that you have like a shortage of bus drivers, but I also feel like it would be great if for like some routes, you did have a bus monitor because there are things that happen on the buses and I feel like the bus drivers may be, you know, they're so consumed with trying to drive that they can't really think about what's happening with the kids on the bus. But I feel like, for me personally, I feel like my kids would be much safer if there were somebody, another pair of eyes on the bus. Because every year, I have to go through the same thing because of what happened to my kids their first year on the buses. And, you know, I just feel like there needs to be extra help for the bus drivers perhaps on the buses. So those are my two things that I wanted to make sure that I made. I smell like chicken. I just fed my kids, but I had to make sure that I got here because I knew that you were talking about the budget and last year when I brought it up at the PTA meeting, that wasn't one, the right place, and two, it wasn't the right time because you guys had already decided. So I just wanted to put those on your, you know, your vision for your budget. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for coming in, we really appreciate it and continue to come because I think it's important. Is there anybody else?
Hi, I'm Erica Smith. My kids go to Pine Bush. For things to consider for the budget, we, in second grade at Pine Bush, they start using an agenda book, which I think is a fabulous skill to start doing, or like a schedule book, and they write down their homework. But when they got into third grade, my daughter, they stopped using it. So we started them off with a really wonderful skill of writing down their homework and being accountable with time management, but then we stopped. And so we're not carrying on a skill that would be really meaningful throughout. So if we're going to start that skill, I think we should continue it because it could be used in middle school and high school and actually for your rest of your life. And even though we do have these great phones in our pocket, being able to write something down on a piece of paper and understanding how to be accountable with writing is very helpful. And then to piggyback on that, a lot of stuff is computer-based and I know that's really helpful because everything is now more computer-based, but all the math for second grade is now on iXL or Reflex. And if you're not writing something down, you're not going to retain it. So I just think we're losing a really important piece of homework and knowledge when we're not writing down math problems even for homework. So maybe they're doing a lot of writing in class, which is great, it's huge for me. I just think that we need to be using the actually writing. And that goes for also, the English Language Arts for third grade is all, the word is on the computer too. So we know that when you read in a book, you're retaining the knowledge weight better. And the ACT scores this year show there was a 40% less, college students were less likely to get into an algebra course, college-ready algebra course than I think, so 2012, it was the lowest it's been since 2012. So we're really not preparing our kids for college. So we need to really think about how we're educating our kids and getting them ready for school.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else? Okay. Sure, yep, come on up.
Just to piggyback right off of what she said, I also think that it would be really beneficial if there were something for, I know there's a lot on the table for kids who need remediation, but I would like to see in my kid's school, you know, something for the kids who get it, you know, that already understand everything that's going on in the class. You know, I don't know if they, I know you guys don't track or anything like that, but you know, it would be just nice for, if you have kids that understand the math concepts, they could get a little bit more advanced teaching. Or if they're reading way above grade level, they could get some type of enrichment so that they don't get bored with learning. I think that's just as important as caring to the kids who aren't getting it, you know, because you don't want to lose the interest of the kids who are way up here. So I just wanted to add that too.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Erica, you did sign up for public comment as well. Are you ready to go, or?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to go.
Okay. So next, we move on to public comment number one and we have Erica Smith this evening.
Hi, I'm Erica Smith. My kids go to Pine Bush. I have a kindergartner, a second grader and a third grader and I usually come up here and I'm pretty loud and boisterous, but I think you all received my 12-page letter that I sent to you about what's going on with my child and it's really concerning me. And that's really concerning me, a point that I could come up here and cry and it's not like me to stand in front of the whole district and be this upset. I really feel I'm being stonewalled by the district to get my kid the services he deserves or he is appropriate for him. I feel like when, I requested services back in April and I did not get approved or they did not go through until October. 60 days, that's out of compliance. And there was more than enough Board of Education meetings in between to go through. I'm just saying, I'm disappointed. I'm also disappointed because I've not heard back or any reply. There's been more than enough. I've asked for meetings and I've been told no. I've been told that they will not, certain people I've asked for certain things to be chaired and I've been told no, that they will not. I've been told there's not enough data. It would just take time for somebody to look through the data. There's data. Remember, kids aren't just test scores. My son is, yes, he's very bright. As we can see, there's achievement there, but there's also other parts where he needs help. We need to look at the whole child. It says you're serving all children for the 21st century, not just the ones that are the most convenient. So as we go through, I really am proud to be a participant in this community as a parent here. I'm actively volunteering in different roles in the community. I really like to be here, but I want my children to be involved here too. And as she was saying on the bus, with no bus monitors, there is problems and we're going to have them be social on the bus and social in the hallways. My son doesn't have any friends and that's been more than reported and more than talked to and trying to support that. You guys don't go have him come home and say, "I don't have any friends." So when I say, "There's a real problem and how can we help fix this?" And then I get a lot of pushback. You don't know what it's like as a parent to try to fix that and then try to work that and then get told, "There's really no problem with him, he's fine. We've done everything. We don't see this, there's nothing wrong." And then you get angry and then they said, "There's no reason for this, for all this hostility." And I don't know what to do anymore. So I'm at a loss. So I'm telling you, I'm at a loss and that's why you received the letter that you received. I'm at a loss.
Erica, thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts. We did receive the email and I apologize that none of us acknowledged receipt of it. We were under the impression that you had been responded to, but we will make sure that somebody does respond to this as soon as possible because you shouldn't have to come to a public meeting and say what you just said. But we really do appreciate it and we've heard it and going forward, we'll make a better practice of at least acknowledging the receipt. Like I said, we did follow up. We'll make sure that you get a more adequate response. Barbara?
Can I just ask a question? Your son was supposed to be evaluated on the 19th of October, did that happen?
Yes. I did. I'm still just waiting for the evaluation. Yeah, Rebecca.
Thank you. And now we move on to board issues, ideas, and sharing, which is a departure from our usual practice. We moved it up on the agenda, but we thought this might be a more appropriate placement for it. Does anybody have anything this evening that they would like to share at this juncture? Judy?
Sure, I went to the mix-it-up day at the middle school today and it's wonderful. I can't tell you how great it is. I did it last year too and it's very loud, but there are a lot of really happy, excited children. The girls from the SUNY basketball, SUNY Albany basketball team were there and they were leading the kids in dances and getting them excited and getting them hepped up and it just, it was wonderful. I mean, we're all here because we care about the kids and be able to see the kids sort of unleashed is, it's great. And I hope next year, other people will be able to go. It is lunchtime, so it's not easy and, you know, not being retired, I have time to do that, but it is a wonderful event. And if some other people can go, I know Sean was there today and Marie, who was not having to report for jury duty, was able to go. And it's great fun, so. I could go on and on, but it was wonderful.
I have video.
And it was very, it was very loud.
Sure, Tim?
I'll chime in on the middle school also. Yesterday, they had their Road Runner event and it was a blast. Again, lots of energy, lots of smiling faces, lots of gasping for air at the finish line. But I was lucky enough to hand out ribbons at the finish line to all the groups of runners and it's all broken out very nicely. If you ever want an event organized, you get FIZED people involved. They run it like clockwork, so, but I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Laster and the FMS PTA for inviting me to do that and a big thank you to the FIZED staff, they were great to work with. It was kind of funny, there got to be a running joke at the finish line between the lacrosse coach and the track and field coach and they're like arguing over, "I want this kid, no, you can't, don't talk to him." That was pretty humorous, pretty funny, so, but I think everybody had a real good time and it was a lot of fun to be there, so I appreciated that.
Yeah, can I just say, last year I went, I actually forgot this year about it, but one of the things that meant the most to me, and Mr. Laster said that it happens all the time, is that the kids who come across first will go around and go with the kids who are slower and having more problems. And sometimes, I don't think they'll even run to be first, they'll just run with these other children and help them and it's wonderful. It is a wonderful event and I know exactly what you're saying, but seeing other kids helping the kids, you know, it just, it was great. And it also then, excuse me, encourages the slower kids, you know, they're right there with them, "Come on, you can do it." And we're raising some wonderful kids, we are, but our school district is home to some wonderful children. Aren't we lucky?
I guess I'll also add a little public service announcement. There's a concert at the middle school tomorrow night at 7:00 PM and Mr. Laster can always chime in on this too if he wants. And I think it's the Gilderlin Music Faculty that does a lot of performing and maybe some family members. And I know last year, there was a high school teacher that sang and was fantastic, so 7:00 tomorrow night, I'm pretty sure. And it's a good time and it's like an hour, I mean, they run it like clockwork too.
Great, thank you. Barb?
I guess I'll just share unless Ben or Judy or Tim or Seema, who was also there, the power of the pen that students use back about five years ago when they were in, what, third grade, out in Pine Bush when they were advocating for a playground that one of their handicapped fellow students could actually go out and play. And we saw the end result of that little writing project and it was just delight to see. And the kids were just so happy and proud and it was a lot of fun.
I talked to a parent who hadn't been there and I, she called about something else and I said, "Oh, I was at Pine Bush today and what a wonderful event." Well, she said, "Yes, my children all came home and were telling me about it." So it did mean a lot, even, I mean, the power of the pen is amazing, but also it affected all of the students. I mean, everybody noticed if her kids went home and said, "What a great event it was." It was wonderful.
Barbara?
This is just a follow-up to what we just heard. If indeed, it took more than the 60 days to process the request, I just hope that we could do better because every day for a handicapped child is important and if a service is needed, it just breaks my heart that you have to wait 60 days, 90 days, 180 days because every day is a lost day. And as I said, I just hope we can do better if indeed that was the case.
I'll follow up to Barb too. I think, I think I emailed the rest of you guys when the family moved out of Gilderlin and they also were late in receiving their IEPs to follow up in the other school district and we didn't hear any follow-up with that either. So it's, I don't know, it seems like a pattern that we continuously hear about even when students leave the district. So I don't know if we can just draw attention to that or what we can do about that, but this is something we get, I guess, on a regular basis, either out of compliance or not on time, there's no follow-up.
Or not feeling heard. I think that's the message we hear a lot from parents is that they don't feel heard and that's something that should be easily correctable. I mean, this is their child, this is their life and I think as a district, we need to do better with that. Teresa?
I just wanted to echo that as well. I love hearing all the wonderful things that the district does because we do do a lot of great things, but it hurts when one family, I'm sure it's not one family, it's got to be more than one, but we're hearing from one. Every family counts and that, I don't want to hear those things. So I really would like to address them and make sure that they get addressed. And the whole idea of, we spend all this time saying that whenever we got an email, that those emails would be responded to, I think a lot of times I assume that they are, but I don't know how we track that they are. Because I felt the same way, I thought it would have been addressed. So I don't know how we, I don't need to, I don't feel like I need to police anything, but I think it should be, this was addressed and we're moving on from it because it was addressed, needs to be done.
Sean?
You know, I just, I wanted to apologize, Erica, because when we talked about our communications policy, I raised issue with how we were handling emails. I want to apologize because I should have replied to you and because I'm still trying to figure out my way here, I did not, I sort of took the lead. And I have a real problem with that email policy, that only, how we reply to that. And I think that we have, you know, as board members, we should be replying and at least saying, "Erica, I hear you, I appreciate your email, thanks for letting me know about it. I owe you at least that response and so I'm sorry." I think that I want to continue to look at that policy once again.
Yeah, and I just want to respond to that because this kind of was a confusing case for me as board president, being copied on an email, not, and sort of coming in in the middle of a conversation, of a reply to someone who works in the district and being copied. I kind of construed it more as an FYI, "This is going on," which is why I responded internally the way that I did. And the message that we received was, "It's being handled." And so I felt as though we didn't need any more, had I known, and I think going forward, maybe it would be appropriate for us to respond, it's just difficult to get involved in the day-to-day operations of the district when we're not here every day, so I don't want to step in and try to micromanage people who work in the district. But I think it's important for us to be aware of these things as they're arising and maybe we handle it differently because it sounds like some, there was a miscommunication somewhere.
I think just even having a response, I think that was lost. I mean, just even saying, "Thank you for your concern." You know, I don't, I can't solve anything individually as a board member, I'll never represent that in an email, but I think it's important for people to know that they, we did get that message, that didn't just end up in some mailbox that nobody ever checks. You know, I check that multiple times a day. Sometimes I don't get any emails in the course a day, but you know, I'm paying attention to it, so again, I apologize.
Yep, I think it identified definitely a hole in our process, so I appreciate that. Barbara?
Both parents brought up another issue, the bus issue. If you have a situation, apparently either bullying or something is happening on some bus routes, do we then put a monitor on for a day or two just to sort of ferret out the situation, what the problem is? You know, if parents report something like this, what is our procedure?
Well, we would look at video before we would put a monitor on. We just don't have the people to do that. We have monitors who need to be on certain bus routes for prescribed reasons and we can't pull them. But we've had principals ride buses to observe, we've had our director of transportation ride buses to observe, so we do try to get to the bottom of the issue. We do rely a lot on our cameras on our bus, buses, they're not foolproof, sometimes they malfunction, you know, sometimes the video that we need isn't available, but we do try to monitor that. And I know Mrs. Charles and I have had many conversations and I know she and Mrs. Rizzo have spoken many times, trying to get to the bottom of the concerns that you have and that other parents have so that we can resolve them.
Do we still do the peaceful school bus?
Yes, we do, yep.
So we do, in all our schools or just in Lynnwood?
Lynnwood, I see Mr. Lockwood shaking his head. Wesmeyer does.
Wow.
The peaceful school.
So which ones do?
Lynnwood, Wesmeyer, Pine Bush. What about you, Chris? Which is a little bit different than the, okay. So, we have a mix there.
Seema? To address the diversity part, I know that teachers, I think in the administration, get some kind of training with regarding diversity, but do the other, any other staff, particularly like the bus drivers?
Last superintendent's conference day, we did-
Back in the spring, we had Amanda Nickerson present it to all of our bus drivers, as well as some other groups throughout the course of the day, and that was the focus of it, was diversity.
Is that a regular thing, or that was like a one-time thing?
I would say it's fairly regularly, I wouldn't say it's like a annual thing with them, they're a tough group to get all together in one shot, so we catch them when we can. But we had a pretty extensive training with Amanda Nickerson last spring. We can certainly do more, but it's obviously a topic that we want to make sure that we're addressing.
Teresa?
I want to say thank you, because I do think this is great, that we're doing this now and not at the end. One of the things that I, I'm not sure, we are allowed to address those that have spoken to ask further question, or no?
It's not our normal procedure, but I guess if you have comments.
I just had a question regarding the diversity training. Can you give us an example of what's lacking? Because I don't know where you're going with it.
Yeah, just come on up to the microphone, so that people at home can hear you.
Okay, so, just in general, like I said, we're a new family here, and what I can say is that my children, personally, I can't speak for other children, but I know in talking to other parents who look like me in the same in Gilderlin, they have the same issues. And a lot of the issues are race-based, race-based. From the standpoint, for example, my daughter wears a short Afro, she gets picked on all the time because of her hair. And to me, that's a racial thing, because she's the only one in her entire building with an Afro, okay? We came here because we heard there were good schools. We had a choice in where we decided to live, but we don't have a choice in how our children are treated. And that is why I wanted to come today, because almost every other day, there's somebody picking on her, or my son, and being told, "Oh, your skin is the color of poop," okay? So, these are some of the things that I deal with, with other children talking to my children. So, for me, it's not even just the fact that teachers need to be prepared for when my kids have something to say, like, for example, there was an issue yesterday, so now we have to keep my daughter home from intermurals. She enjoys it, but one child who has picked on her consistently is in the intermural program and picks on her in after-school, and I'm really tired of hearing about it. So, I'm like, "Okay, you're not doing this anymore. Why didn't you tell the teacher?" Well, I don't want to be a tattletale, because then she'll be picked on for being a tattletale. Then they won't be able to play kickball anymore. So, it's like a ricochet effect, and I'm sending the message to her, it's not okay not to tell. It's not okay to be insulted and think that it's okay. So, this has become a bigger issue, because I, as African-American, are having to talk to my children about things that I'm almost certain other parents in the school who have kids that are seven and nine are not having the same conversations. And it's not fair to my kids, and it's not fair to me. And so, for that reason, I mean, we've had substitute teachers come in, and they clearly have their bias, and they clearly think certain ways about certain kids, because things have happened to my kids that I know would not have happened if they were not black. And so, you know, this whole idea of learning to be, have racial tolerance, I think is very important. And so, when I'm talking about training, I'm talking about training people to be able to have these hard conversations about race and what is happening in these schools to the minority population who are black and brown, because many of the people who are staff, they can't have these conversations, or they don't feel comfortable having these conversations. So, there's nobody for my children to lean on until they get home. And then when they get home, and I hear the whole episode, I get in my car, and I go and I bother Ms. Rizzo, you know, because I don't want to let it pass. And so, at the end of the day, I mean, this is something that not just bus drivers need, because my kids went through it on the bus, and they looked at the videos, and they saw what happened. It was not some fabrication, okay? They went through it on the bus. And, I mean, they have no faith in adults who look different than me, you know? So, at the end of the day, they're very skeptical when they talk to the adults, because they don't know if these people are really here for them, and if these people welcome and nurture all children or not, and that is a serious problem. When you have a seven-year-old and a nine-year-old who can't trust their bus driver, who can't trust someone who's coming to the classroom for the day, who can't trust a teacher to be fair for whatever reason, this is a serious problem. And I'm new to the area. I didn't grow up in Gilderlin. I'm from the South. And at the end of the day, you know, the things that I've heard other people tell me about Gilderlin is not very positive from the standpoint of being an African-American. And so, sometimes I feel like people, like substitutes, maybe come into the classroom because, in Gilderlin, because they don't necessarily want to deal with certain populations, and then they come into the classroom, and they see a population, and then they throw their bias. That has happened to my children. And I think my children are good kids, and I think my kids, you know, they really try to do what they're supposed to do. So, at the end of the day, they're asking me why, and I have no answers for them. So, I had to come here. I'm very involved in the school. I did PTA, but PTA wasn't where I needed to be. This is where I needed to be, to state what issues I have with the system and how things are working. So, when I talk about training, I mean, even for kids, there are kids in the building who say things, and kids say what they hear at home, a lot of times. And so, there needs to be some kind of support system there for everyone, the adults and the children. And I think racial tolerance, or any type of tolerance, is good for people to learn about, whether it's having disabilities, whether it's your sexual preference, whether it's your, whatever it is. You know, I think teaching tolerance is important, and it's needed now more than ever. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Barbara?
Follow-up to that. Many, many years ago, we instituted the El Vegas Anti-Bullying Program, and we used to have morning meetings where the teachers, I don't know if you did it when you were in the classroom, for about five minutes at the beginning of the day, would basically talk about things like that, being kind to each other, being respectful of each other, and things like that. Has that gone by the wayside, or do we still do that in our, at least in our elementary schools?
I think there's a morning meeting in every classroom in every building. I'm looking at the shaking heads of yes. Whether they call it El Vegas or not, I-
No, but-
Absolutely.
The idea behind it is that you take those few moments to sort of set up the day and teach the kids respect and all that, so at least we're trying.
Anyone else, Ben?
Well, just to go on that issue, I think a big part of it is just exposure. You know, you can have five minutes at the beginning of every day in the abstract, but if you're just, you know, I think in Gilderlin, you know, you know, I think one of our biggest problems is that we just don't have a very big African-American community. You know, they're there, but I think in the high school, we have, you know, maybe only a little over 100 black kids. And so, I know that, and to your point about other groups, when kids go off to college, a huge percentage of them come out as gay or questioning, you know, as compared to when they were in high school. In high school, there's, you know, six, and all of a sudden, in college, you know, now there's 60. And so, I don't know if that's because they're away from home, or if it's just part of the school culture where you don't want to be different. I think, I think schools are harsh to people who are different, just in general. And so, you know, I definitely do think it's an issue, and I don't know that just talking about it would be enough.
Can I, while we're on the topic, just of tolerance and diversity a little bit, there is an event at the Gilderlin Public Library coming up with an individual named Lyndon Kudlitz, and this is somewhat of an offshoot of some training that we did at all of our elementary schools throughout last year. Lyndon presented to our faculty and staff at every elementary school twice last year, and is actually scheduled to present at the middle school on the 7th of November, I believe. But the public library has a community-wide event, and it's, again, it's very much an offshoot of the things that we did last year here in the district. You know, this is a critical and important topic. Mr. Laster, Mr. Piper, and I at the middle school have actually been planning, training with Dr. Stacy Williams from Aris College, who focuses in on inherent bias and the implications for us in our practice, our professional practice. We haven't been able to nail down a training date, but in fact, it's not going to be a training date her work. She insists that it be something that is ongoing embedded, it's not just a superintendent's conference day or a workshop. So, you know, we're in conversations with her, and we're hoping to do something fairly soon with her, but that will, that will test us, this community, for sure. And she's made it very clear that there will be some very difficult conversations that would come out of this. So, hopefully, there's more to come fairly soon with that, but just the topic of tolerance and diversity has been an ongoing conversation for us in the district. You know, there's certainly more to do. We hope to do more, we look forward to doing more, and again, the middle school has something scheduled for the 7th, but just a little public announcement for the public library's presentation, which will, again, be a follow-up for some of the things that we've done in the district.
Thank you, Damian. Anyone else?
I just want to keep that on the radar as we go into the budget season, because I know this is not the first time I've heard about it. I've heard from parents, too. I grew up here as a brown person, and I've heard comments probably my whole life here of other people saying, you know, sharing their experiences with me. And even though I think we're ahead in many areas, I think we can continue to improve. I know Niski recently had an issue with their soccer team, and they are also a district, I would say, is progressive in terms of like being tolerant and diverse. But I think if we just become stagnant, then we end up in a worse situation. So, going into the budget season, I hope it's on our radar to take more of a proactive approach, to do something about that. Or at least to continue the training, or to, you know, increase the training.
Barbara?
Last thing. I think, is her name, Mrs. Charles?
Michelle Charles.
Mentioned enrichment. And I want to keep that on our radar, because I've heard the same thing, that the kids who are in the middle or need some help get a lot of it, but the kids that are sitting there having finished their work are having a hard time being enriched. So, I know we have halftime in most of our schools, but just to keep it on our radar.
Thank you. Okay, that was a nice, robust discussion that we had this evening, and now we move to school board recognition. Marie?
Yes, this is our opportunity to thank the nine individuals who are here at the front of the room, serving each and every one of our children here in Gilderlin. The School Boards Association declares this, I think, as does the governor, School Board Appreciation Week, but we have a particularly special tradition here in Gilderlin to recognize each and every one of our current board members in a way that carries into the future. We don't give you a mug or a pen. We have a tradition here where each of our buildings select a new library book that reflects something about each of you, and we present it to you this evening, and you'll get a chance to take a look at it. I'm afraid what they have, as Peter's standing up there.
Well, it says reflects them. My book is called Sharkley.
Peter, sit down until I call you up. Peter always likes to color outside the lines, which makes whatever he has chosen even more special. But this is our way of saying thank you to each and every one of you, because these library books stay in the library into perpetuity, and they have a gold seal on them and a signature that signifies your time of serving the school board. So, while the match might not be perfect to you as a board member, the thoughtfulness is certainly sincere. So, if I can invite our principals to come up and present your selections.
I love it.
Same thing. Okay, that's okay. The title could be-
That's your title name, Sharkley.
I'll read it to my kids.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, all right, great. I am actually big- Thanks, appreciate it.
I always liked this part. Thank you.
How much is it?
So, you've met my daughter? Not yet. Loves cats right out the gate. She has two favorites. Patricia White. She met my daughter.
Where'd you get that?
Thankfulness.
I should read that.
I'll read it out. All right.
Thank you very much. You can feel free to take these home and peruse through them and bring them back at the next meeting or whenever you're around.
Next PTA meeting.
Next PTA meeting. Okay, and now we move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2018, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments on this? Tim?
I had a couple things. Wanted to ask about the revenue report for the period ending September 30th, 2018, and I just want to make sure I'm following this correctly, because I'm usually not. So, I was looking at the BOCES revenue, so this is all the revenue report. So, it says, "BOCES revenue is around $188,000 for the rental, and then services $279,000, and then state aid $1.3 million." So, is it then fair to say that the BOCES, the district revenue from BOCES is around $1.7 million, or is there more to look at?
There is, you're right, it's just in different categories. So, state aid is for services that we purchase through BOCES, so that's the piece down below under state aid. The other two lines are related to rental of classroom space, so we get money to actually rent the physical space, and then for services that we provide to students as a result of them being in our school. Ancillary services is the other portion of the equation. So, there's a model that Capital Region BOCES uses with all schools that rent classrooms, and part of it's for the physical space, and part of it's for the other services that students participate in, nursing, library technology, and things of that sort.
Okay. And then, let me see, on the, on the following attachment for the expense report, so on that one... I've got to figure out what my questions were again here. So, that, I was just going through and looking at some of those BOCES lines again, and so, in section 1240 for Chief School Administrator, in A1310.49, it says BOCES Services, and then it's encumbered is $11,985, and then it says, for the available, it says $0 available. And if you keep going down this list, you keep kind of running into that, where there's an amount, like A1330.49, again, BOCES Services, and there's encumbered, and like every time it's available is $0, so I was just getting confused on, probably I need to know what encumbered means, because I thought it meant what you have, but then I couldn't understand why there's zero for available.
Incumbrances are predictions of expenses. So, the whole idea here is to make a system where you can't overexpend the amount of money that's allocated in the budget. So, we plan to spend a certain amount out of the budget-
But with, particularly with, with BOSI's Services, um, we commit to a service for the course of the year. So we don't want administrators or other staff spending money out of that code that's not intended to be spent out of that code. So we commit to services at the beginning of the school year. BOSI's will tell us for whatever services are contained in this particular line, here's the cost of the service for that year. So we can truly anticipate that's what we're going to spend by participating in the service. So we want to make sure there's no opportunity to spend beyond that.
So does a lot of this happen like at the end of the year then?
It gets adjusted during.
Where you start seeing changes?
Yeah, it gets adjusted during the, during the course of the year. So something like BOSI's expenses, we get a monthly bill. So it's not always perfectly 1/12th or 1/10th depending on, on the service, depending on the nature of the service. But you could use that as an example. Some of them are billed monthly on a regular basis. So you would see 1/10th of the total amount that was budgeted. Expenditures will increase by a tenth in a given month and the encumbrances will decrease by a tenth in a given month. The available will still be zero, but it's showing you during the course of the year how much we've spent for that item and how much still remains to be spent and is reserved for that purpose.
Okay. So it's never really zero available because there is money there?
Oh, yes. There's, there's money. It's kind of a paper entry. There's, if you look at paper, there's, there's no money. There actually is cash on hand to, to pay those bills. Uh, but from a budgeting perspective, what we're doing is we're setting aside that money and making sure it can't be spent for any other purpose because it's already dedicated to a purpose.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
That being said, Neil, that's basically saying that when you do see something, just so that, I, I think I, I know this, when you do see that it is available, it's almost more so like a, I don't want to use this term loosely, but it's like a surplus if it's available because it was encumbered, but it wasn't used, so then it goes into being available.
Yes. And not everything has a finite known expenditure at the beginning of the year. So we have a budget estimate and then truly, a good example is materials and supplies, textbooks.
Yeah, I was just looking at that one.
Yeah. So we have a budget for that, but we don't have a planned, regular expense for that. It will depend on the principals, working with their staff, what books need to be ordered. So that will be reflected as an expenditure at the time the purchase is made.
Right.
Available balance will come, that will, expenditures will increase, available balance will come down, but there's still money there. So the principal will know, I can still spend more money on textbooks.
Right.
So, but that's an uneven distribution of expenses over the course of the year.
I'd say it's somewhat like your escrow in your account, in your, your mortgage. The money, you put the money there, it's there, but you're not going to be able to touch it. It's already on purpose.
Right.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Ben?
In the minutes, it says, um, 36 individuals signed up to start time task force, but it's 39. So we could update that. Um, and then I just wanted to do, um...
The minutes, the minutes reflect that night that was 36. We've added since then, but I think that night.
Wasn't there? I think it was more people.
Because you said there was some more. Oh.
The list has all the people, but then the information item says 36, which is just taken from the agenda.
Yeah, the list was done after those, yeah, extra people came on.
Right. Um, and then I, I just wanted to, um, thank all the teachers who serve as advisors to the clubs, um, which is in our Personnel Action. Um, you know, a lot of teachers are serving in two or three or in Carol Kelly's case, five clubs. Um, and so, you know, those are really important students, so I wanted to, you know, thank them for that.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 9-0. And now we move on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thanks very much. I do have a textbook submitted for your information and your approval at a future board meeting. And the title is Jefferson Sons by Kimberly Brubaker Bradley. This is for using grade seven, language arts and social studies. And my next item is for your viewing pleasure. I'm sharing with you a five-minute video that art teacher Ray Shower made to highlight her students' work with the new iPads in the elementary art room. And she is integrating the use of technology in her lessons. She's aligning the new core art standards and I promise this will make you smile. So I definitely encourage you to take a look at it. The link is included for you in the agenda.
I think if she gets music in there, she's done it all.
Yeah.
That was really funny.
She will.
It was great.
Uh, next item, not on such a fun note, but the Board of Regents, as you know, adopted the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards in September of 2017. And this was the result of a two-year statewide collaborative review process. The following timeline outlines the transition period over the next three years to the full implementation of the Next Generation's Learning Standards. And I'll share with you the definition as provided by the commissioner. Full implementation means that the New York State Grades 3 through 8 state assessments will be aligned to the new New York State Next Generation Learning Standards. So here's the timeline. September of 2017, as I said, they were adopted by the Board of Regents. The Phase 1 of implementation is intended to raise awareness and that timeframe is the winter of 2018 through the spring of 2019 with professional development available on New York State's Next Generation Learning Standards. And just to note that 2019 New York State assessments will continue to measure the 2011 learning standards, so the tests will not change this year. Phase 2 is to build capacity from the spring of 2019 through the summer of 2020. Again, professional development continuing on the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards. And again, I'll note that the 2020 assessments will continue to measure the 2011 learning standards. Phase 3, considered to be full implementation, is from September 2020 into whoever knows how long, but ongoing. So this will be the full implementation of those standards. And then in the spring of 2021 is when the new Grades 3 through 8 tests measuring the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards will take place. The timeline regarding the full implementation of the standards and the assessments in alignment at the high school level has not yet been determined and it will be forthcoming. However, full implementation and assessment alignment will not occur prior to the school year of 2020, 2021. So that's referring to Regents exams, which will be changing as well. So just an update for you so you can project out into the future a little bit. Uh, and I'm pleased to report, my next item, that we have a business teacher who has been recognized. Gilderland High School's Business Department is proud to announce that high school business teacher Joan McGrath has been recognized with the Collegiate Award. The Market Maker Award from the School of Business at Ethica College recognizes outstanding high school faculty members in business, finance, or economics as a result of their dedication and support to their students. Mrs. McGrath has been selected as a recipient for the inaugural 2018 Ethica College Market Maker, uh, Market Marker Award. Congratulations to Mrs. McGrath. And lastly, we have eight students, student musicians, who are being recognized for musical excellence. So each year, thousands of student musicians in New York State compete in an opportunity selected for their prestigious NISMIA Conference All-State Musical Ensembles. Admission to these highly selective groups is based upon the score received the previous spring during the NISMIA Solo Evaluation Festival. Each student performed before a certified adjudicator who carefully evaluated every aspect of their performance. So the Gilderland High School Music Department is very proud to announce that eight students were recognized for their exemplary performances, including Jesse Cohen-Greenberg, Brian Guo, Andre Valverde, Alan Wang, Tracy Wei, Kenny Yamashita, Mariel Zhao, and Kevin Zukowski. Congratulations to them and of course, congratulations and thank you to their teachers as well.
Thank you, Damian. Teresa?
Damian, I have a question regarding the New York State ELA and Math Standards timeline. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in that last statement that you made regarding implementation and assessment, you say that full implementation slash assessment alignment will not occur prior to school year 2020, 2021?
For the high schools specifically.
So does that mean that they're taking Regents exams that don't exemplify what they've been, how they've been taught during the school year?
Currently.
You're saying they're not aligning. You're saying that until then, they're not going to align?
Right. So in other words, there's a, there's an implementation plan for the standards. That's the first step to make sure that students are exposed to those standards. The assessments will kick in after the fact. So after that implement, that phase of, of three years for implementation, so there will not be any changes to those exams until then.
But they're still being tested on the current Regents, but being taught a different way?
I understand what you're saying. There, there's always going to be some level of, for lack of a better term, a disconnect when you implement new standards and then follow suit with assessments. So I'll go back to the last implementation of new standards and assessments, which occurred in 2010, 11-ish. The state at that point in time, and I think they would openly acknowledge it was a huge mistake, was they basically did it all in one fell swoop. So at the high school, for example, Mike was leading the department at that time, they had the new Algebra I exam. The Algebra I exam was based on the newly introduced Common Core. So if you picture this, the Algebra I teachers and the math department at the high school are looking at this and saying, okay, these incoming freshmen now who are taking this new exam based on new learning standards were never exposed to those learning standards from grades K through 8.
Correct.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
And that's a statewide problem. And I think they, they've recognized that. So their implementation this time is to be a little bit more gradual with it. So they're, they're giving this, as, as I described to you, this phase in where we're raising the awareness, we're doing the alignment, building the capacity for implementation of those before any new exams come into play. There, it, it's really, it's, it's almost impossible, I would say, to have no disconnect when you have those, those implementations. Um, you know, hopefully, we will have, and I shared with you, I think at the last board meeting, we're right now in the process of doing some pilots of some shifts in our elementary math program as well as our, our middle school math program. And it's for that reason. So we want to make those shifts happen as soon as possible. So by the time those students get into 2021, when they're likely to face new Regents exams based on new standards, our program has already shifted for that. So we're not in that, that, you know, that kind of hard start where they're hitting with a, getting hit with a new Regents exam, but not having the exposure to those new standards. So we're trying to do it as quickly as we possibly can. Obviously, we want to do it well.
Is it more so how they're taught versus what they're taught?
A little bit of both. I mean, there, there are some instructional shifts, I would say, that are coming with the new standards as well.
Okay.
Um, you know, so there, there is some of the how, but there's certainly very much the what. Uh, you know, the, I would say, the good news is there is not a massive shift in the learning standards between the old standards and the new standards. I think there are pockets of changes, um, you know, and they have done some streamlining of things. I think they, you know, they've recognized that there may have been some missteps in the previous implementation and they've, they've made some changes there.
Okay. I don't know if I like the answer, but I guess that's the answer.
Well, it's not my answer. I'm the messenger here. I'm not making the state-level decisions at this point. But that, that's the plan that, that has been shared with us from the state.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Damian? Okay. Thank you. Now we move to school business information. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. One, just one item tonight, and that's an update on student enrollment at the beginning of the school year. So on the first Wednesday of each October, school districts across the state collect a variety of basic educational data to share with the State Education Department. Among these data are totals of students who are enrolled in each of our school buildings. This year, there are 4,807 students enrolled in our K-12 programs and that number is 33 students less than were enrolled last year and 78 students lower than projected during the budget development process. So by level, the changes are elementary is increasing by 52 students over the prior year, middle school is decreasing by 42 students, and high school decreased by 43 students. It's important to note that the district also has financial responsibility for students who reside in our school district but are not actually enrolled in the district. These students are in a variety of programs, including BOSI's programs, private placements, alternative placements, and charter schools. And there are 88 such students and that's a decrease of two students over the prior year. Then finally, housed in our buildings are another 96 students attending BOSI's classes. Let's just focus on our conversation. Tim, at Pine Bush, Westmere, Farnsworth Middle School, and Gilderland High School. And there are a total of 13 district classrooms that are rented to service those students. So that's the revenue that we were just talking about, is a portion of that are for those 13 classrooms that were rented to BOSI's.
Any questions or comments for Neil? Okay. Thank you for that report. And now we move to superintendent information items. Marie?
Okay, my first item Barbara has already mentioned, but I did want to call everyone attention to the wonderful event we had at Pine Bush Elementary School on October 17th, uh, where we had the formal ribbon cutting of our new ADA compliant playground area. And I want to recognize a lot of people, beginning with Laura Ockerman, who was the third grade teacher who gave the dreaded persuasive writing assignment that her students turned around into a thing of real beauty. Um, I want to recognize Mr. Chris Sanida, who did an outstanding job putting together the ceremony and coordinating the speakers, who were all very eloquent, and the fifth grade choir, who sang a very inspirational song about being a change agent. Um, and then of course, Mr. Noonie and his team, who made the dream come alive by actually installing the new equipment in the worst of weather, um, conditions. As Mike Van Alstine told me, on any given day when they wanted to work on it, it was either 96 degrees or raining. Uh, but they made it all happen. It happened to rain the day we did the ribbon cutting, so that was fitting. And my last thank you, um, in addition to those students and their amazing work, would be to Senator George Amador, who came through really in a very serendipitous kind of way to support the funding for that program. So he was on hand on Wednesday and we're just really appreciative of everyone who played a part in that very heartwarming and meaningful ceremony.
Can I just say, he, he brought out a letter, he pulled it out of his pocket and said, "I keep this letter on my desk from these kids." And it was just, it was a very nice touch. It, it sort of put it all together, I thought.
And he was telling the truth about that because last June, I was in his office, you know, with a superintendent-like topic meeting and the first thing he did when he saw me was reach on his desk, pick up the letter, and show me with the students' signatures on there. So it was very meaningful. So great event. My second topic tonight is less happy. Um, I do want to start though, and it is my reference to our Capital Project referendum and exit survey, with thank yous because despite the disappointing outcome, a lot of people put a lot of hard work and effort into that Capital Project vote on the 16th. Uh, I want to recognize our Community Facilities Committee. I want to recognize Cliff Noonie for all of the time and effort that went into putting together the project. I also want to recognize Aubrey Kamler for all of her work with our informational items. And of course, Neil Sanders and Linda Livingston for the coordination of the vote itself. Um, so while we're disappointed, we absolutely respect the will of our community. And I think we're at a point now where we need to define a process to figure out how we go forward. Um, as you know, an exit survey was made available to everyone who voted and I think we had very good, uh, participation in either the online or paper version of that. And we will have those results, uh, by the end of this week, Aubrey tells me. So we need a plan to figure out next steps. Will we have a committee? Will we invite in our architects? What are the next steps that we need to think about in order to put together, um, the next capital project to our community? Because as you all know, there is work in that plan that absolutely needs to be done in order to keep all of our students and faculty and staff safe and secure in our buildings. So I'll start with that and I don't know if we want to discuss a little bit about that process for going forward. I'd look to Christine.
Sure. Marie and I had the opportunity to briefly kind of discuss how this conversation tonight would shape up and we thought it would be best if we just kept it to process and not necessarily, you know, how, if, if we present this to the voters again, what should be taken out or on what date should we do that? But just more, what are our next steps procedurally in doing this? So if anybody has ideas. Gloria?
Well, I would, I think it would make sense to involve the architects and Cliff in facilities planning here, only in terms of looking at what was in the project and what really has to be done.
Because of the safety issues. I, you know, I would support starting there anyway, to have that highlight for us, those things that we can't postpone or just say, oh, well, we can't do it now. But they have to be done. That would help give at least some guidance, I would think.
Is there a plan of reconvening that committee, again, that was made up of different community members? here, only in terms of looking at what was in the project and what really has to be done.
Because of the safety issues. That's why, you know, I would support starting there anyway, to have that highlight for us, those things that we can't postpone or just say, oh, well, we can't do it now. But they have to be done. That would help give at least some guidance, I would think.
Is there a plan of reconvening that committee, again, that was made up of different community members? Yeah, was it facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I guess that's one of the things we can talk about tonight, if we think that would be a good idea, to bring that group back together since they were so involved with it and knowledgeable about it before. Does anybody have thoughts on that? Sean?
I just don't know how we really move forward until we see the exit survey. You know, I've done my informal discussions with people, and I've taken some pieces away. I have some, you know, concerns to share about that. But I think until we do that, I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
I think you're right, which is why tonight is kind of just procedural, and we really can't get into the project itself and what was in there, because we haven't had an opportunity to thoroughly go through the exit survey yet. So I think definitely more discussion to come, and tonight is just really, where do we go from here? Ben?
I shared an article with the board earlier today that I think is relevant to my point, where I think this kind of wraps up with our forthcoming discussions about vision for the district. You know, it appears that our vision isn't matching with what the taxpayers' visions are. So, you know, I think that it would be good to wrap the Capital Projects up with the vision projects to make sure that there's a total buy-in. I know the Communications Committee, when we met yesterday, right, was introduced to some new tools and methods for getting community thoughts on a whole host of topics, and so I think that this needs to be one part of a bigger conversation instead of just keeping it segmented.
Tim?
I understand your point about the process, but I agree with Mr. McGuire. I think we need to have a larger discussion, because, I don't know about you guys, I haven't slept since last Tuesday. This does not happen in Gilderlin. You do not see bonds, budgets, you do not see them voted down. So this is a pretty big deal. Has it happened? Yes, but it's pretty rare. So, I mean, I have a huge page of notes here, and I came prepared, I thought we were going to talk about this at some length, because I want to go back to August fourteenth and talk about that meeting, since it wasn't recorded, so nobody could see any comments made back then. We had, I thought, a pretty good discussion for maybe a half hour or so at that meeting, and, you know, nobody saw it. And when you go to the minutes, there's no mention of it. This is very frustrating to me, so, you know, I think we need to have a bigger discussion, and I don't know why we can't have it right tonight while things are fresh. I'm hearing a lot about tone tonight. I'm hearing some problems with tone in our district, and I think there's a lot of problems with tone that affected this vote. And I don't think we need to wait for the exit survey. Quite frankly, I went over the exit survey from May and have comments to tie in with that, because I think there was plenty of warning back in May, when you go through the additional comments on pages thirty-six through forty. And I only have a couple examples, and they were, you know, I didn't tally it all up, I was going to. I think it would have broken down pretty close to the way the vote was. You get a real fifty-fifty mix of, "Attaboy, you're doing a good job," and then a comment, you know, comment number forty-five, "Keep expenditures reasonable, and yes, votes will come, spend foolishly, and no votes will be the answer." That was pretty prophetic. Now, having said that, I don't think there was any foolish spending put forth in the document by the committee. But what I'm hearing from the public is otherwise. So I don't know why we can't have that conversation tonight.
And if a formal motion was needed to bring that forward, I would fully support that discussion, Tim.
Okay.
I mean, we don't need a motion to do it.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion.
Of course, we can have the conversation tonight. We just thought it would be more informed if we were looking at the current exit survey, but of course, I'm not going to. No one here is going to say, "Don't have the conversation. Please add the comments that you would like to this evening." I'm not going to stop you.
Okay, all right. Taking my watch off, because my wife says I go on too long sometimes, and you get the tune-out effect, and I understand that, so I'm going to try to be sensitive to that. I just wanted to start out, and I'm just going specifically by notes, I wanted to just say thank you to the voters. To have more people show up on October sixteenth than showed up in May for the budget vote says something. Unfortunately, it's only, I think I read correctly, that it's only eleven percent turnout of registered voters in the district. And I'll steal Mrs. Gito's comment from yesterday, that it's hard for us to make decisions as a board if we're only hearing from eleven percent of our community. We need more help. Things we've heard tonight, extremely helpful, and so we need to hear it at the voting booth. So I would really challenge the Gilderlin community to get twenty, thirty, forty percent of participation at voting time. It's crucial. And if you don't think so, look at the vote. Fifty-eight votes. That's close. So I think it's very important that people get out and vote, whether it's two weeks from today, or next May, or whenever. And you don't have to just do it with votes, you can contact us through texts and email, well, maybe not texts, sorry, emails, and you can call us. It's very important that we hear from the public at times like this. Again, I'll just, you know, applaud you guys tonight. It's a good education to hear what's going on out there, and we want to hear. This is a good board. Everybody works hard on this board, and this is a good district. So there are problems out there, but they'll get fixed. They will get attention, and they will get fixed, because that's what happens here. We just have dedicated people, whether it's bus drivers, custodians, you name it. So, you know, have faith. Might take a while, but have faith. And I feel bad to hear these stories. I do. And I think this, so, again, when you hear this kind of tone out there, I think it showed up a little bit at the voting booth. Now, I'm going to go back to August fourteenth, because at that meeting, you know, I was tremendously worried about this, and I said so. I said I had sticker shock, about forty-two-point-seven million. It just didn't feel right to me. I said at the time it didn't go along with some comments on the May budget vote, I just shared one. I shared I was concerned about the committee process. I was very concerned that we had just gone over a hundred million dollars for the school budget, and now coming back for forty-two-point-seven million dollars. And I mow a lot of lawns in the area, and I'm in the Gilderlin area, or Gilderlin Elementary School area, Linwood, Pine Bush, Altamont, you know, almost all over the place. And what I was finding when I went to mow lawns is, and I'm mowing for retired teachers and just all sorts of members of the community, and they would come out to me and they'd hold this up, and then they'd hold up their tax bill. And they wanted answers from me, and, I mean, I'm just there to mow. And so I didn't have the answers, but I could feel their frustration, and, you know, some of them are people that are going through medical issues, and, you know, there's a lot of stories out there. Back at that August fourteenth meeting, I was concerned we'd had three years of surpluses, and I know we just went through our audit, and the surplus from last year was one million six-hundred-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-thirty-two dollars. And we verified that at Audit Committee, right? Because I asked about it and said, "Can you, is it fair to say near one-point-seven million surplus?" And I was told yes. So, and I know Mr. Simpson had been, I think, at that August fourteenth meeting, and had said that, you know, the three years of surpluses totaled seven-point-four million. So again, it's, if I'm a voter, it's hard for me to hear you have surplus year after year after year, but now we're coming for more. I went through tax assessment issues, you know, that whole minimum wage bomb is what we've referred to it as here and there. I'm worried in New York State now, I mean, some things have popped up even since that August fourteenth meeting, that, you know, I'm worried now that we're going to be under one-party rule in New York State, and what happens when that fight for fifteen becomes fight for twenty, or fight for thirty, or fight for forty? Because that's how these movements have a way of going, and that's all going to trickle down to school districts, and that's going to be a bind. It's not even called minimum wage anymore, it's called living wage. So I don't know why they don't make it just a hundred dollars an hour then. It's, I think, a big problem. We just heard about numbers for enrollment, and, again, during this time period, there was an article from the Empire Center by E.J. McMahon about New York public school enrollment back to eighty-nine, ninety levels and still falling. And sooner or later, that's going to hit school districts all over the state. Gilderlin is probably not going to be immune to this. The last line says, and there's been an annual average of zero-point-five percent for a total decrease of more than two-hundred-fifty thousand students in the last eighteen years. At this rate, in a few more years, enrollment in New York schools could fall to levels last seen in the late nineteen-fifties. This information makes me worry. It makes me worry about, you know, what's going on in general here, and it gives you a lot of uncertainty. And, you know, I also commented how there had been talk during the summer by at least one administrator saying, "Money is no object." That comment bothers me. Money is no object. And I think if you look at the vote last Tuesday, money is the object. And I said that comment was irresponsible. It's one of those comments that's going to stick in my mind for a long time. And I know at the fourteenth meeting, I said, you know, the Margaret Thatcher line, "Everything seems great until you run out of other people's money." And at that time, I said, "I didn't think we were there, but we were at the precipice. Now I'm not so sure." This vote is impactful on my thinking. So now there's been a lead-up to the vote and the actual vote, and now you start hearing from your neighbors and the people you mow lawns for, and the people who come play golf at the golf course you work at, and all kinds of things. And, you know, that's where things get pretty intense, in my opinion. And, you know, I'm hearing from neighbors of mine on our street, and they're retired teachers. The woman who lives behind me is this just wonderful person, who's a college professor. Guy up on the corner, he's, he used to be second high up in the New York State Controller's Office. You know, these are highly educated people. They're seriously pro-education people, and they voted no. And they had their reasons. Their reasons were the timing of the vote. Their reasons were, it was a wish list, their words, not mine. The one gentleman was very upset about just the process to get an absentee ballot, and he might come to the microphone some night because he thinks that there was an attempt to suppress the vote. I don't agree with that, but he thinks that. And if you go back to the May exit survey, comment eighty-six, there was just about voting in general, there was a comment that said this was the second year in a row with voting problems at an elementary school, and, you know, the last comment was, "Get it together. It seems odd and suspicious." You know, again, there's all of these different ideas out there. You can see the counting up of the no votes. And then lastly, you know, for whatever reason, I end up speaking to a lot of current employees and retirees in the district, and these are people from all levels. They work in all capacities, all jobs across the district, and they live in the community, and they talk to their neighbors, and they talk to their family, and they talk to their friends, and they talk about how they've been targeted, and they talk about how they show up for work with a pit in their stomach, and how they're afraid of losing their jobs, and how they're working in fear, and how they are beaten down, all of their words, not And I have been trying to sound the call on this for a while, and I know my comments won't go over very big tonight, but they have to be said. And as far as targeting goes, if you have a problem with any of my comments, please come to me. Do not target my wife, who is an employee in the district. I know how things work, better than most. Do not do that. Come and see me, and we'll talk. But, you know, this, to me, this has been a perfect story. All of these people vote. All of these people vote. There's been a perfect storm that's been brewing, and it's been, you know, there have been attempts to bring it to people's attention. I am hopeful, very hopeful, that there's going to be some change. And I'm hopeful, when we get to the vision thing, that we're going to get some ideas on the table, because it can happen. I really do think it could happen like a light switch, and, you know, is it going to be uncomfortable at times, like the last X number of minutes, because I went way longer than I should have? Yes, it will be, but sometimes that's what has to happen to solve systemic problems. So I thank you very much for the time.
Of course. Thank you for your comments. Sean?
It's my enthusiastic, yeah, thank you. Back in August fourteenth, I expressed some of my personal concerns with the proposal, and I said at that time that I couldn't let that get in the way, that I thought the voters needed to, you know, give their opinion. And we got that. And I'm glad it went the way it did, because had the outcome been flipped with the same margin, I'd be very, I'd have a hard time with that, because it's not clear to me what the voters want. I've gotten my informal polling done, as I do, as I talk to, you know, people in my family, in my household, in my neighborhood, at the soccer field, at church, at the market, anywhere, I can stop and talk to somebody, I do. And I don't think anybody disagreed with the things that are essential to the facilities. I think people got that. But some of the comments that I got is that they felt that it was, that there were items into this project that were crammed in there. And it echoed of a similar capital project from a number of years ago, where they felt that there were essential things that needed to be addressed, but then there were other pieces that were put into there that didn't really belong in there. I got a lot of comments that this was the district's way to circumvent the tax cap by putting in, by putting in items that should otherwise be budgeted through the course of the year, furniture and technology being those two pieces, and I think that's probably the other two legs of the stool here. And so that's, you know, some of the challenges. I will say, you know, we'll sort of end on a high note. I have been happy that the district has established and progressed with the capital reserve. When I first dipped my toe into these waters, I asked that question at a PTA meeting, and there wasn't, there really wasn't a capital reserve out there, so I think that's been in the right direction. I think the outreach was effective. I don't think, I think there was a good job on getting the word out. I know some people did not see the information, and I did my best to let them know what was going on and make sure they got the vote out. I might have gotten some no votes out in the end, but I, that was my, I needed the And I think the other piece, well, I'll leave it at that. I mentioned the piece that I have gotten consistently, that I thought the items in there were cramped, so we've got to rebalance our priorities here and move forward with it.
Thank you, Sean. Others? Seema.
I think there was still, and I always talk about communication, even though we, I would say the district did, I think, a pretty good job with sending out information about when the vote is and what's included. I heard feedback from people, and you could tell by some of the comments, there's confusion about where some of the funds come from. People were asking, you know, how can they have, you know, Chromebooks for students and not have money for these other things, not knowing that there's different, you know, buckets of money that come from the state for that piece of technology? So maybe communicating more. And I think the other piece was the timing of it not being, I know we couldn't do it in November, but I guess that, I don't know, large, I guess, negative campaign about the timing. And that combined with people not knowing enough, you know, to come out, then made it so close. So I'm in favor of, you know, if we have to redo this to go with the May regular budget vote. I understand tying it in with the vision is a good idea to some extent, but I think some of the work really can't wait. If we, you know, take apart pieces of that bond, there's things like safety, I would say people would not want to wait for versus, you know, some of the other things that were added in there. So I can see why it would make sense to tie that into the vision, but I think the vision will take, that whole process of doing that will take longer. So I don't know if we should wait for that to be done, to put this out again to the voters.
Barbara.
Well, I think we have to sooner rather than later. I'm thinking December, January at the latest, because the only reason why you do it in the fall is so that you can begin the process. We're still talking two years out. And talking to some folks, a lot of people don't understand this process. They said, "Well, all these things were overblown." And they don't realize that in any given item, you have architectural fees, you have engineering fees, you have all this other stuff that if you go do a home improvement project, you don't have. But these are things that because you're, you know, a state school and you have to follow state rules and all, so that was one of the things that, you know, all your estimates are overblown. Why can't you get actual contracts? Then we know what we're voting on. Well, because the contracts won't go out for another couple of years, so these are the architects that guesses, you know, based on all the factors that they've dealt with over the years. And the other thing, you know, with a politician holding a news conference where there's no rebuttal proclaiming that, you know, we are violating the law when we attempted to have the vote on the same day as November, because it saves us money too if we're allowed to do that. And then to have that go, you know, throughout the Capitol District with nobody challenging it. You know, I know Marie put a letter in the Alt One Enterprise, so you have a small segment there, you know, where we did explain the reasons why you can't have the vote on the same day. And yet, person after person after person that I ran into, "Why didn't you have it in November? It's only two weeks away or three weeks away," whatever. And then you stop and you go through the whole thing that we have a letter, we actually have a letter from the Board of Elections, and, you know, on and on. But people don't get that. They see a ten-second sound clip, or they get a ten-second roll call, or they get something shoved in the door, a one-pager, that, you know, just gets them all fired up and they don't go any further and ask questions, "Well, is it true or is it not?" So, I mean, I would just hope that our architects and, you know, maybe the committee that created this document with Cliff can go over it again with a fine-tooth comb, and we can get it out there again. I also talked to a lot of parents, "Well, I didn't think you needed my vote." What do you mean, "You didn't need my vote"? You know? And hopefully, they would come out the next time, too. You know, when you present it as a need, this is not a wish list. The only things that I was going with was the furniture. People said, "Well, why is the furniture in there?" And again, you know, you're doing a capital project, you're doing the science labs, you're not going to put in the same kind of furniture in twenty-twenty that you had in nineteen fifty. You know, you go to a modern-day college or you go down to the Nanotech Center, they don't have a setup from the nineteen fifties. And, but to explain that one-on-one, you know, you have to do it. And we tried to do it with the newsletter and Nice Glossy here, and we had it on our thing, but there is a need for what we put on there, and so I just hope that we can get it out there again.
Thank you, Barb. Other comments? Ben?
So I would say that it might not, based on some of the comments that I received, where some people were complaining about the timing and, you know, as much as we know why it's on that date, and as much as we try to communicate that, I forget who explains this somewhere in the literature, but it's much easier to get away with a lie because you can keep it simple. You know, whereas the truth, you got to go through like three steps of logic and you got to hold someone's attention for, you know, six or seven minutes. And, and so, just my feeling on it is, if we rush it back out, that kind of sends the wrong message. It kind of says, you know, if we rush it out on a day that we weren't going to have a vote, you know? So May, you know, yeah, definitely, we should try to get out by then, because as we've been saying, some things need to get done. But to rush it back out there, I think, is a, you know, it's kind of like disregarding the voters a little bit. Something that I heard was that some people that I talked to stopped voting. And this goes back to Tim's point about, you know, eleven percent. They said, "Well, it's at the schools, so, you know, mostly parents and teachers vote, and they almost always pass. And then when they get voted no, they just put it back up for another vote and then it passes. And so I don't really feel the use in going out to vote." And so I think that goes back to that point about, you know, we don't want to, we definitely don't want to make it look like we're rushing, you know, by just turning around and putting this right back out there. We need to look at what people said and make changes to the plan based on what they said. And to the vision comment, you know, I think this ties in with the complaint about the capital project being kind of omnibus, right? You know, where we just have so many things that, "I want to vote for this, but I can't because I don't want to vote for that." You know, and I think a lot of that goes to, if we don't have a central vision, well, now we're adding something over here and adding something over there. And, you know, if people don't get that, then they look at this and they don't see a plan. They just see a wish list, right? They don't see that we're trying to build a specific thing. So, you know, maybe we don't have a vision finished by the time we put this referendum back out there, but I definitely think we need to tie it into the process so that this can be seen as a step as the community builds a vision. Because otherwise, it's always going to look like that to somebody. You know, I don't think anybody is going to go out and vote. I mean, and this applies for budgets, too. I don't think anyone's going out to vote liking every single thing and what they're voting for. But if they understand that it's part of something bigger and they want that something bigger, well, then maybe they're more likely to vote yes for it. I heard similar comments about circumventing the tax cap, and I think that these were similar to comments that happened in the budget in May, you know, where we had the actual budget and then we had the propositions over here. And they were like, "Okay, well, so if you're just going to have an extra proposition, why do you need the budget cap?" You know, again, we kind of understand that a little bit better, but the voters don't always. So, yeah, you know, I just think, let's not rush it and, you know, let's tie it into something bigger.
Thank you, Ben. Other comments?
I think, I also, as Sean did, talked to people, and I know Tim did, talked to people, I'm sure lots of us did. And I happened to be at one of the PTA meetings, and I'm on one of the PTA councils, at one of the elementary schools, and I heard similar types of things. And I heard people talking a lot about uncertainty and some of the things they're talking about, like, "We don't know what the town's doing with, you know, assessments or things like that." Or they'll say, "Well, then we read in the paper that the library's going to have something in the spring." So, you know, people were like, "Oh, what do we do there?" And then there was uncertainty about the information they were getting. And I was listening to that specifically, having been on communications. They were getting our information, and then they got this flyer, and then they were hearing things in the newspaper. So where's the truth here? Who do I believe? And we all know that that's become a theme lately, you know? What do we believe and how do we get at the truth here? I also, I believe that we do need to listen. We need to take to heart the comments that were made in the exit survey. We need to look at that carefully. We need to learn from it. I wish, my frustration is, I wish over the seven weeks or so, we had that people had come. I mean, I don't know how much more welcoming we could be in terms of providing a mic and a time for people to come and share their thoughts with us. We are, I think, speaking for all of us, always willing to listen. And we had that bond issue out there. We sent information galore. We put it everywhere we could think. I mean, I think we would have walked around with sandwich boards if we could. We were really looking for ways of getting information out there, and we were asking people, you know, I mean, every day, every time we had a meeting, "Come and tell us something." I understand some people are shy, but there's always email. I did not receive one email regarding this capital project. I didn't get one person stop me even to talk about it. Maybe they're just afraid I'm going to jump down their throat. I don't know how I would react. But I really think that, you know, the public also has a responsibility here to communicate with us, because I think we are a very open group of people willing to listen. We may not always agree, you know, I'm for that, but at least have the discussion. At least we become aware of what the issues are before rather than after the fact. So I am in favor of moving ahead in terms of identifying those things that have to get done. Because of safety, there's communication pieces, PA systems, there's ventilation systems, and we were timing this so that we could get the bids out and get the best prices and get the contractors on board. I am for moving ahead on those things. We need to move ahead, and I would like the advice of our architects and our facilities manager to do that piece. I understand people saying, hearing things like classroom furniture and stuff and saying, "Oh, those are luxuries." We can, you know, in a time of crunch, okay, and they couldn't, they couldn't split their vote. They voted yes or no. If we had heard maybe a little bit more before, who knows what we would have done? But I wish we had known more that there was that kind of a feeling out there. There were some people that spoke to me at the PTA meeting saying, "Maybe parents were too complacent." I don't know about that. But like one person said to me, "Gee, my husband didn't vote. I almost strangled him when he found out it was like fifty-eight votes. He felt terrible. But maybe we've become complacent. We haven't had problems in Gilderland with these kinds of things before." So maybe that's an issue. There's a lot of maybes out there, and there's a lot to be, to look at and studied and, you know, and try to figure out. I feel good about what we did in terms of the facilities committee. We brought people together that cared about the whole project. They stayed with it through the whole thing, putting this thing together. I feel very good about that. And I feel very good about the way we reached out to the community. I have to tell you, I was extremely frustrated when at the last minute, when we couldn't deal with any of the remarks that were made, things were put out that we couldn't even answer. You know, that to me, people that do that are really not thinking about what we're thinking about, which is what's best for kids. I mean, our number one concern here is to do the best we can for kids. I, you know, I get really upset when people kind of accuse me of being, or us of being, you know, sneaky or somehow, we're doing something, you know, behind people's backs. I said, "My gosh, we couldn't have, we lit it up on the board of the library on the Western Avenue." I mean, how much more could we do within our, you know, limits in terms of getting the word out? So I was a little frustrated, I have to tell you. But I'm at the point now of, I want to, I would like to have a better communication between the community and the board, and that's going to take two sides getting involved. We're willing, we're open. I'm loving the fact that, you know, you guys came tonight and shared with you your thinking. We need to have that kind of public responsibility to help us. Thank you, Gloria.
Sean?
In my effort to be succinct and yield time to Tim if he needed more. No, I'm good. I did want to go back, because we talked about moving forward. Now, I do want you to know, I will not be in favor of moving this vote forward over the winter time. And I think, and under the rule of not pulling any surprises, if that vote comes here, I will vote against it. I think that was the other message we heard from the voters, that this next vote has to be with the budget.
I think you're right. Anyone else? Teresa?
I don't know what's the answer. I really don't know what the answer possibly could be, because I don't think that voter turnout really indicates a population at all. When we have forty-eight, hundred, forty students this year in school, and not even half of that, now granted, that doesn't mean that those are students, that's not families, I can't believe the turnout that we had for this. So it's not an indication as to what the community wants. I'm just a little bit upset at the fact that that was the percentage of people that came to actually vote on such a large amount of money. So it is a big thing. And yes, it is taxes. I'm frustrated because I don't know what else we could have possibly done to get the information out there. I think it was very, it was done very well. I don't know what else we could have done, other than maybe, the only thought that came into my head is that maybe at a school level, that would only pertain to kids that were in school, is maybe getting a litany of stuff out to the students to bring home to their families, to let them be aware. But again, that's only a population of the community. That's not everybody. That's just students. One of the things that was brought to my attention was, they didn't like going to the voting polls and seeing it was just a yes or no on a dollar amount. That was one of the comments that was given to me. Now, even if you gave a list of things that this capital project would have pertained to, I honestly don't know if that would have helped either, because I think people would have said, "Oh, I like that you're going to make my schools more secure, but I don't think I should be paying for furniture right now. I don't think I should..." Like, that whole wish list thing was a little bit frustrating. I think there's some ignorance out there that they just don't know, and that's one of the reasons why I became a board member, to be honest. And I'm not saying that we need to have everybody become a board member. I'm just saying, as a citizen of Gilderland, I don't, or a resident of Gilderland, I don't feel like I was informed. And becoming a board member became, I became informed. Ignorance might be bliss. But at the same time, I also feel that, I think a lot of families don't know because they don't know. But it's not to say that the information, I think Marie did a great job in trying to get the community involved. I do. I think that having, you know, the sessions that you had at the library and the information, I think, was there. I just don't think people saw it. And I think when they went to the polls and they saw yes or no, and it wasn't the list of things, even if you had a poster board with, "This is what the capital project is going to fund," I still think you would still get no's, because people would say, "I don't think that should be funded. I don't think that should be funded. I do think that should be funded." I don't know if Neil, you can kind of put something out as to why we need to do it this way? That you can't just do, vote on this, this, and that? Because I think that might be an issue, too, that I think a lot of residents feel that it is a wish list. And they don't understand why we have to do it the way we have to do it. And I think that was a big factor. But again, it's not a good, it's not a good picture of what the residents of Gilderland wanted when people don't go vote. If you have, what was it, eleven percent? I mean, that's, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I do agree with what Barb was saying, is that certain things you need to do now. And I don't think waiting till May is the answer either. And I don't know what the answer is. I just think that May is almost a whole year away. Some things really can't wait, and some things can. I think we need to revisit some of the items and maybe cut back. What is essential stays and what is not goes, and we wait till the next budget to see if we can get some additional funding for the extra stuff that maybe is not essential. I don't know what the answer is, but that's my two cents.
Thank you, Teresa. Seema?
Just one more thought. I hope it's a wake-up call for people who are, I guess, assuming that other people would go out and vote yes. Do you think about twelve more? assuming that other people would go out and vote yes. Do you think about twelve more people in favor at each of the voting places and it would have passed, which is crazy to me? And it was really frustrating, like Gloria said, for people to say, oh, they were hiding information and not putting in, you know, when I know parents are getting S and Ns about other things and talking about things, and then I also see these S and Ns about the vote. I, I feel like it would be really hard if you're a parent here to not, like, I feel like you would have to actively try not to listen, because, I mean, it just came from everywhere. So, I don't know. If, if anything, I hope this is like a wake-up call for people to say, hey, you can't just rely on, you know, other people. You need to go out and do it yourself.
Barbara?
I think it might help, and I'm gonna have Neil bail me out on this one. There was a reason why the legislature, when they put a two percent tax cap on, excluded capital improvement funds from the tax gap. The reason being, in most school districts, your personnel is about eighty-five percent. All those people expect raises, you know, over the course of their contracts. So that gives you just a small sliver for materials and the other essentials that you need, transportation, improvements in your schools. When you have seven schools with air conditioning, heating systems, just painting, you know, crumpling, soffits, et cetera, plus seven grounds, you can't possibly maintain your buildings under your regular budget. And the legislators knew that. And so the reason why you have these capital bond funds is to do the work to maintain your buildings, because if you don't maintain the buildings, it just causes, just like if you ignore a roof leak in your house. Before, it was just a roof leak. Now, all your, your sheet rock has to be replaced. Your flooring may have to be replaced if it goes down. The same with the heating system. Somebody said, well, why do you have to get new phones? I don't know if you've ever been involved in the business, but computers, phones, anything electronic, they have a shelf life, or a lifespan. And then the manufacturer doesn't support them anymore. And so then you go on eBay, trying to find a part here or a part there. And with our communication system, that's sort of the situation that we're in. But Neil, I throw the ball to you. Can you explain a little better than I'm trying to explain it?
Yeah, well, there was, we've talked about building condition survey once every five years, and they've been presented to, to the board over time. But really, that was an outgrowth from the State Education Department for failing school buildings throughout the state of New York. So money's tight. What gets the attention, and what they found, I think New York City was one of the areas in particular, where buildings were in such a state of disrepair that they weren't safe for kids. And they needed to make sure that there was a process in place so that money could be available to keep schools up to date, safe, usable, and not have that worry competing with other interests of education. So they went through this process that basically said, you need to track the condition of your building. We're gonna give you a checklist. You need to have an architect, licensed architect or engineer come in and, and do that evaluation. And then also, and you have to share that with the board. So the board has to be aware of the conditions of your buildings, so that couldn't be kept hidden from you. And then also, when you do a construction project, they're going to make sure that whatever projects are included are aligning with the repairs that are needed to the building. So if your proposition is to add a swimming pool, but you haven't addressed other structural deficiencies within the building, they're going to tell you, no, we're not going to allow you to put a pool in without you having a plan to address some of these other more important and critical infrastructure issues. So there is a plan by New York State to make sure that buildings, school buildings are maintained and safely, and have regular updates, and creating a mechanism where they take it out of the tax gap formula, and also make sure there's state aid that's associated with that as well, so that that portion can continue to be maintained.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I, I think we heard a lot of good information this evening, and we'll continue the discussion moving forward. All right?
I just wanna know, so what is our process? Because everyone is very concerned about moving forward. Should we reconvene our facilities committee? Should this go to business practices committee? I think we need a structure to begin to have the conversation. Otherwise, three weeks will go by and we're gonna be back to where we are right now. So...
I think I heard Gloria bring up engaging the architects, and maybe it is best to send it to architects, business practices committee, and then...
And then maybe the facilities group gets back together and looks at the input from them, and makes the final...
Right, meanwhile, looking at the exit survey.
And I know, we don't wanna go into the winter, 'cause I'm thinking the same thing. That would be, how quickly can you get a vote, get, how much time do we need to put something out together?
I would have to, I'd have to look at the legal, so legal advertising is for forty-five days, at least. It may be longer now.
It may be in the winter anyway.
So we'll have this exit survey results at the end of this week in a draft form. Perhaps we do a doodle kind of thing to get the business practices committee in and reach out to the architects at C S Arch to get that meeting scheduled in the next couple of weeks. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That's definitely...
Barbara?
The other thing, with our bond council and bond resolutions, would it be possible to put up three resolutions, as we have it broken down here, the safe and secure, health and comfortable, future ready, and present it to the public that way?
Multiple propositions can separate it out into multiple propositions.
I would, you know, maybe our facilities committee could look at that as well.
Just two, three, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Which they're...
You know what I'm saying?
In which they're voted on separately?
They'd be voted on separately, right.
Good thinking, Barbara. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Sorry, one more item.
I have one more. I'll talk fast. It's about start times. Our task force met for the first time on October eighteenth. We had about thirty-six of our thirty-nine people who came to our session at Farnsworth Middle School in the library classrooms. After we did some introductions and some kind of setting the context for our work, the large group broke into five working subgroups. Two of them are focused on research, one looking at the, kind of the literature on adolescent sleep and school start times. And the second research group, looking at our own students and gathering some data about them. Those two groups have a hard deadline to present to you their findings on December eighteenth, so less than two months. Our third working group has to do with community outreach. They will be thinking about how we share information so our community is well-educated about the issues, but also have the charge of gathering feedback as we come up with potential options. The fourth group is the options group. That will be the group who comes up with what possible ways might we go forward if we were to think differently about school start times. We have called them the SWAT groups. They'll look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then the last group is a policy group, who will review policies at both the local, state, and federal level that will have an impact on any potential changes that we have. Things like attendance, number of required minutes of school day, bargaining contracts. So they have, Ben's on that committee, subcommittee, so they have their work cut out for them. Barbara is also on the subcommittee, and she was, you were in the research group, right, Barbara? So, so we got off to a good start, I think. We met for about an hour and a half, give or take. Enthusiastic group, and I think we'll have some good work to show, but there'll be plenty of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Maria on that? Seema?
I just have a quick question. Is that meeting with the other districts coming up still? It didn't happen yet?
It didn't happen yet. It is on November fifth, and we have, I think, five of us going now. Barbara, you've signed up, Regan, one of our community members asked, Nick Harris and me. So that's it, November fifth at Bethlehem, and we'll be reporting on that.
Great, thank you. And now we move on to board president information items. There are three this evening. The first relates to the New York State School Boards Association two thousand eighteen Voting Delegate Guide. A survey of the proposed amendments and resolutions was shared with each board member to complete for use by the Board of Education Voting Delegate at the NISBA convention. The results of the survey are attached for discussion. I think you also have a pie chart at your seat. Board member Judy Slack is the voting delegate for the two thousand eighteen convention to be held in New York City on October twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. If requested at this time, we can discuss the proposed amendments and resolutions that will be voted on at the fall convention. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share on this? Judy, do you?
I think just, this is a great way that Deb, Marie's secretary, the pie chart makes it so clear about what people were thinking. And the one that stands, well, the two that stand out to me are at the very end, where there are obviously no. And besides that, I, six is undecided, kindergarten. Yeah, undecided. And that's kindergarten attendance mandatory. Whereas now, you don't have to go to kindergarten. You could start school at first grade if I...
That's right.
And so people are undecided. And so I would probably vote yes, because it's not a, a no. And if people have any concerns, I'm really gonna go with, take this pie chart and go with it. I am looking forward to it. There's always some good discussion. And sometimes some surprises in terms of what some districts are feeling is not good. But I think these were good. I appreciate everybody answering and getting it in. So we'll go with that, unless somebody has some concerns.
Any other questions, comments, issues to raise on this item? Ben?
Well, I just, I know that they can't do any better, because they're just advocating proposition and not specific legislation, but for so many, for so many of these, they feel so ambiguous, you know, that, you know, I'm not sure if I, if I support it or not, you know. For example, mandatory kindergarten, how do you do that? Do you lower the compulsory schooling age? Or do you not let kids in to first grade if they didn't do kindergarten? You know, 'cause if you just make kindergarten mandatory, but it's not compulsory schooling age, you know, or do I homeschool my kid for that year and then re-enroll in the district? You know, it just seems, it's always difficult to, to force things like that. Proposition ten, exempting expenditures related to safety from the tax cap. Well, how many things can we say are related to safety, right? You know, at our, our Capitol project vote, you know, half of it was, was related to safety, you know. So does that mean we can add twenty million dollars to our budget, you know, if we needed to, without going over the tax cap? You know, again, I don't know that they can, you know, fix this at this level of just advocacy, but, you know, just, you know, it seems, it seems unwise to me on some of these to, to just advocate for things without any specifics. You know, 'cause it's kind of, you know, NISBA gets to say, all right, the schools say this, right? And, you know, we don't know what we're saying yet at this level. You know, I think it's, I don't know. Again, I know this is how this process works, but I feel like it's just so much better if there's a bill somewhere that we can say, yeah, we support that bill, or, or no, we don't, than to just say, you know, you know, more gun control, right? Okay, what does that look like? No one knows, right? But the schools are gonna say it, so that they're, that they're in favor of it. So, you know, a lot of my no votes, which were on a lot of these, was just because it's like, you know, I don't know. If, you know, I, theoretically, yeah, but I don't know who's going forward, who's the lobbyist that NISBA's gonna pay, who's gonna go talk to these politicians. I don't know how they're gonna describe what I'm thinking when I read this sentence. And, and I, you know, so I don't wanna put my name on it yet. So I just, I just wanted to say that.
I think it's important to say, it is advocacy. It's not, we demand that you do this. It's, we think that this would be a good idea based on what our school districts have told us.
I think it's more directional, and I know during the year, we get those NISBA advocacy alerts that I always forward to you. And that's when they have a specific agenda item, like a legis, a law that's being proposed, and then they're asking, okay, call this person. And so when I send those out, then they've got something, at this point, they're not writing legislation. They're saying, what's the, they're telling the legislator, this is the direction we want you to be looking. We don't know what you'll be able to work out with all your, you know, constituent, you know, members of the legislature, but this is what we, we would like you to see. But down the road, we don't, you know, we'll have to look at the language and decide whether we'd support it.
Sorry.
I think it's just pointing us in the direction without the real nuts and bolts, as you say, which you would like to see, of course.
Pointing the school board advocacy team in that direction.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Judy. You'll have to let us know how it goes.
Some days, some, some years it goes fairly quickly, and some years, I think last year, wasn't there a lot of controversy? Barb, you were on that, yeah?
Yeah.
And it goes and goes and goes, yeah.
The year before, the year before. We were trying to keep people out.
Yeah, and, and one year, they, they didn't have a quorum. They didn't have enough people when it came time to, to find, they can't, and they can't go yes or no.
Okay, the next item is the ad hoc visioning committee. And so now we'll discuss the creation of this committee, and then we can start to get the composition, so that we can start this discussion. So Maria did not get any emails, I don't believe, from anybody expressing their interest, although I know there are several people on here who are. I think we talked about four board members. So if tonight we can get interest, and if there's more than four, we'll have to figure out how we're going to pick those four. So who is interested in serving on this committee? Do we have four?
I'm confused. Didn't we get a, one of those doodle polls?
We got a poll about...
No, something else.
So there were two, two outcomes of the retreat. One was to create an ad hoc committee that would work on, if I understand correctly, defining the process around visioning in the district. But then Mr. Hendricks, who was with us, said the board really should have the first conversation around visioning itself. So the doodle was about getting the board back together to have that conversation. And then this is the formation of the ad hoc committee.
Okay.
So I think I saw...
Um, how many? There's two there that are?
I have two.
You have Ben and Gloria?
Yep.
Are there other interested members? I mean, we said we can have up to four, so...
I may have to put my hand out, but if we are meeting first as a board to talk about the process, that's gonna help me better decide if I can commit that time or not. If it's something where it's like, three meetings a month, I can't commit that time.
Yeah. That might be a good idea to reconvene the board and then get the committee organized at that meeting.
Well, I think the reconvene, the whole committee was to get our vision out there.
Yep.
And then this group is supposed to figure out the process piece, like how often, you know, that, that would be this group.
The community part.
Oh, so it's flipped. Yeah.
Right. So the, the first step is getting the board together for our vision.
Yes, all of us, to get us on board.
And then the committee's for the rest of the steps, and figure out how to bring everyone else in.
You've got three there?
Yep.
Okay, we can move forward with the three, for now.
Yeah, and it may change, you know.
Yep, it may change. Okay, great. The next information item is a variety of policies. And I will ask Barbara if you wanna weigh in on some of these that are presented for a first read.
The sexual harassment policy is quite a bit different from your original one you got at the last meeting, because the state finally came out with their version. And it addressed a number of the issues that we had with what we had from NISBA. So I think you will find that quite refreshing. So I think you will find that quite refreshing. The rest is just the use of the school buildings, you know, exhibits, how do you apply, again, sort of an updates of our policies, and the display of the flag regulation, basically as an extra day where we require the district to have the flag flown. And that's September 11th.
That's, I'm sorry, what is it?
September 11th.
September 11th, oh. But it's now called Remembrance Day. So that's been added.
Thank you. Now we move down to action items, school business management. Neil?
Yes, first item this evening is a resolution and declaration showing the tabulation of votes cast at the special district vote on October 16th, 2018, and declaring with the results of the ballots. As we discussed, the final tally was yes votes, 1,317, and no votes, 1,375. So the referendum was defeated by 58 votes.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution and declaration? Seema, second. Barb, are there any questions or comments on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have a resolution to approve several service agreements. The first is a memorandum of agreements for special education programs that are tied to federal IDA flow-through funds, and those agreements are with Advanced Therapy, PLLC, the Center for Disability Services, Northeast Parent and Child Society, Parsons Child and Family Center. We also have agreements with Capital Area School Development Association to prepare and deliver a workshop for school office professionals, with LearnWell to provide education services to students admitted to medical facilities, with Living Resources to provide American Sign Language services, and with St. Catherine's Center for Children to provide education services for students with disabilities.
May I have a motion to approve the service agreements? Judy, second. Teresa, questions or comments on any of these agreements? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
And then finally, this evening, is a resolution to approve an internship agreement with Grand Canyon University.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Judy, second. Tim, questions or comments on this agreement?
Yeah. How did we happen to get something from Grand Canyon?
It's a new one for us.
Yeah.
They've reached out to us, there's a student that I think lives in this area, but is taking classes.
Goes to school there?
I don't say it just, yeah. Russell Sage in Siena.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil. And now we move to superintendent action items. Marie?
Okay, thank you. I have two requests for foreign travel. The first is a trip to Montreal in Quebec, Canada, with our Farnsworth Middle School students in March of 2019. And then our high school students will go to Quebec City in February of 2019, and are seeking your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the foreign travel? Ben, second. Sean, questions or comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Two co-curricular clubs, one both from Farnsworth Middle School, Dungeons and Dragons, and Ice Guys, where students will learn to rap and beatbox.
May I have a motion to approve the co-curriculars? Seema, second. Teresa, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Oh, I skipped, I most important thing.
Some people wouldn't be very happy.
Sorry, gentlemen. I am very pleased to present to the Board of Education the memorandum of agreement that the district has with the Principals Association. We worked with them since late spring to come to a successor agreement to their last contract. I think it was very professional and productive negotiations. We, Neil and I, were working with Mike Lester and Chris Anida, and I think we landed in a very good place that serves both the unit and the school district very well. So I present it for your approval.
May I have a motion to ratify the contract? Gloria, second. Judy, questions or comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero. Okay, and now we move to board president action items. There are a variety of policies up for approval this evening. They were presented for a first read at the last meeting. I will note that we did have a lot of discussion surrounding Policy E, which is Student Personal Expression. The policy as presented for approval this evening does include that language that there was some discussion on last time. Do you want to remove that from this list and vote on that separately? Seema?
I do.
Yes?
I will.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve Policies A through D on the list? Tim, second. Sean, are there questions or comments on any of those? Teresa?
I just had a question regarding, I read the e-video review and selection form. Without getting into personnel issues, is this typically the policy that we have? Because I know that we've had issues prior with videos being shown without prior approval because it's an e-video. Is what is written now, as it's always been, or is it being revamped?
Damien, do you want to?
I don't, I don't know who I should look at.
Essentially the same, but this is only the form that you have here.
So typically, this is the form that would be filled out if someone's using a YouTube video, if someone's using, I don't know, what other instructional e-video?
By policy, yes.
By policy. So if a teacher doesn't use this form and just says, I'll just show this because it's quick and I don't need to go through the whole thing, that, is that something that would be deemed inappropriate?
Goes against the policy.
It goes against the policy, because this is a policy. Okay.
C is the policy, right?
Oh, yes.
All the details.
C is the policy.
C is the policy, D is just the form. Fill out.
There's actually a spot in the policy, on the last page, called Using Excerpts, which indicates that you don't always have to fill out that form, though.
It, yeah, I mean, think, I guess, think about where we are today compared to where we were 10 years ago, even.
Right, to ask, to ask permission to your, to...
Right, I mean, media is accessible 24/7, small clips, large clips, full motion pictures, the entire gamut of accessibility to different media types. So, you know, we've basically said, well, you're utilizing extended or full-length or, I don't know, even half, I mean, it's hard to pinpoint like a number of minutes or something along those lines. So there has to be some level of trust here, where we're trusting people's judgments with certain things. You know, without getting into some of the concerns that you've expressed previously, I think we've encountered some situations where a person has opted to show a full-length of something, which presented some issues.
Judgment that you should allow to have.
Right. You know, when you look at the form, and when you look at this policy, and I will go to my grave saying this, it is in every teacher's best interest to have this completed and have your colleagues and peers take a look at it and get a second set of eyes, or a third, fourth, fifth set of eyes on that, so that we don't run into situations where there may have been a question, or maybe something was missed that was deemed offensive or inappropriate. So, you know, as much as I know this, this becomes somewhat of a, you know, an additional step that people have to take.
Right, yep.
I will always say it is in their best interest to take that extra step. It eliminates questions and it provides you with some basis for the decision-making.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on those policies? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Okay, now we will need a motion to approve the Student Personal Expression Policy as presented today. Tim, second. Barbara, maybe we do this by a show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All those opposed? Okay, passes six to three. Okay. Now we move on to board committee reports, audit. Teresa?
We don't have a meeting set up yet.
No meeting set up, okay. Business practices, there will be a doodle poll going, yeah, we will set that up. Communications? Sean?
Moving right ahead, we met yesterday, Monday, yeah, yesterday, jeez, days are flying by. I'd want to point out one thing, while we were working on a board effectiveness evaluation tool, we got about halfway through that, there's a lot of discussion on that, we'll pick that up again next month to hopefully wrap that up.
That was just for the meeting evaluation.
That was just the meeting evaluation, right.
The ones that we would typically do after a meeting.
Right.
But we stopped doing some of that.
Yep, and we're trying to make them concise and effective, so that way, when it's 10:00, 10:30, we're still, we still feel okay filling them out and not rushing out the door. The other thing I wanted to point, draw your attention to, because you'll see it in the minutes, and we'll, and Marie's gonna send something out to the, to the board on that, is that we looked at a product called Thought Exchange that Marie had come across. And what it is, is an online tool to collect public feedback and public input on subjects. It's, it can be, you know, somewhat rather guided, asking people to respond to a question. And the way it works is that people can then rate the response to the question, and so we can start to see emerging themes, areas of consensus, starting to bubble up. We raised a lot of questions to the vendor, I think they were well aware of some of the potential challenges that exist with products like that, you know, so much as the controlling for, trying, not being able to game the system, and having a, a, a small minority monopolize the discussion. So, anyway, without getting too far into it, you'll see some information coming out about that. I think the communications committee would like your thoughts and feedback on a tool like that, whether it would be helpful, especially in some of the, some of the things that we've discussed. I think that the challenge is going to be getting it out into people's hands and having them actual, actually return it back to us, so that's it, we'll be back together next month.
Thank you, Sean. Policy committee, Barbara?
We have a meeting coming up, at 8:00 AM on the Thursday.
Thank you. And now, public comment number two. Anybody signed up? Okay, and now we need a motion to...
Wait a minute.
Sure. Yep, come on up.
I apologize.
That's okay.
My name's Mark Lemire, I live in 20 West, we've been here about three years at Development, only been in play for about four years. First of all, I want to say, listening to you guys for two board meetings, because this is now my second board meeting, it's clear that y'all care, and y'all working very hard, and just the fact that you're here two and a half hours after the board meeting started, many boards don't spend this much time. I want to talk a little bit about the budget vote, the special project budget vote that went down, and just some of the feedback that I heard. I'm sure I don't know as many people as you all, because I'm relatively new to the community, although I do know a lot of people, and I've worked down in, at SUNY Poly, so I know a fair amount about education. Not enough info was something that people were talking about here a lot. I think people really did have a lot of the info, at least the people that I talked to, they knew the vote was happening, they knew what was happening, and it wasn't a concern that they didn't have the information about this particular vote. I think that the main concern that I was hearing was that our taxes are already way too high. They look at their friends that live a little bit further up in Clifton Park, and other districts in and around here, and their taxes are not nearly as high, school taxes in particular, as what Gildones are. And a lot of the feedback that I got, and even from people who haven't lived here very long, and some people are like, sticker shock with the taxes, you know, I think that you need to really spend your time and understand that before you come in. But our taxes are quite high in relation to some of the other districts, and maybe there's appropriate reasons for that, okay? But I don't think the people that live in the community really understand that and really believe 100% that they're getting the most value and the most important things for the money that they're already spending. So when you go and ask them to spend another $50 million, just about, that's, that's a big deal to people, and that's what I heard a lot of feedback at. One of the things that you talked about is, we only had 2,000 people voting, and hey, I want to hear from the whole community. Well, I think if you get more people to vote, and not that you shouldn't, and not that you should avoid this, you're gonna hear from the community that more people are in, our taxes are already too high, and you're going to have more trouble. And one of the things that I think any governmental body, including the school district, and other governmental bodies needs to do, is they need to try and really look inward and say, what are the things that we're already doing, and what are the things that we're already doing really well, and we need to continue to build on? And what are the things that we aren't doing as well as we should, or where do we have waste and other problems that we should, we should excise and fix? And I think that's a message that has to get out to the community, that they have to understand that you're doing that, you're looking at that. And I can tell in some of the comments that are coming out, that there are folks that really care about this sort of stuff. But I think before you go and ask people again for another $50 million, or, I don't know the exact number, as I said, 42, before you go and ask folks for that again, I think that you need to show them and demonstrate where the money that they're already paying, which many of them feel is already very high, is going. The last comment has nothing to do with this. Last meeting, y'all went into executive session, and then you didn't come back out. I don't think that's a proper procedure, and I just suggest that somebody talk to your legal counsel about that. You're supposed to come back out, in my understanding, and, but you all have legal counsel, and you should perhaps talk to them. That's it, so, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yes, Sean?
Can we just, just address our procedure on executive session, so it's just so this gentleman is aware of how that occurs?
Well, we do leave executive session, but we don't come back to this room.
But then the, then the public has no idea to know either any, what happened in the executive session, or how long the executive session lasted, and when it ended. So, if you, if the public is going away outside the room that you're at, and you bring them back in, and then sort of explain whether or not any action was taken in the executive session or not, and if there was action, what we said, that would be, again, it's a question of integrity.
Sure.
Yeah. In executive session, the board cannot take actions or expend any public funds, there's very limited purposes, or limited actions that the board can do. But, you know, my experience that typically, and having worked in the public meetings arena in the past, there wouldn't be any report out of executive session unless an action was taken. Actually, I think our, our motion is to exit executive session with no action taken.
That's the problem, the public isn't aware of that, because you don't come back in. And if you read your meeting book, I think you'll find that the way that you guys share this, again, is a question of integrity.
Now, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Teresa, second. Barbara, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you.